I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could you have a moment of silence, please? Please rise for the class to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald and the Suburban Trends, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, township library, and all district. Roatville?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Conklin? Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Greenough?
Here.
So, Brian?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
We're going to need an executive session after the file. Are we going to do that now, or should we do it every person? We're OK now, though? I'm going to need a motion for executive session.
So I'd like to.
Yeah, let Abby do it.
OK.
Abby, we're going to let you go.
Before we do, though, I don't want to jump around the agenda, but we will. This is your final meeting this way, so I just wanted to say on behalf of the entire board, thank you so much for your contributions, your participation this year. You're a wonderful addition to our Board of Ed, and you'll always be part of this Board of Ed. We do have a small token of appreciation for you here. I'd like to give to you and warm wishes for a successful college career.
We'll let you give your last report.
Hello, everyone. We have now made it to the end of the 2021-2022 school year. Our eighth graders are getting ready for their promotion ceremony on Monday, and our seniors are preparing for their graduation on Tuesday. Today was the high school's last day of finals, with tomorrow and Monday being makeups. The first team all-county athletes represented their awards this week. The girls' dinner was on Monday and the boys' were on Tuesday. We had many West Milford athletes accepting these awards, so we congratulate all these athletes who attended. Special congratulations goes out to Coach Stoll for being named Passaic County's Boys' Lacrosse Coach of the Year, and Dylan Connors for being named a Passaic County Student Athlete finalist. Our boys' lacrosse team had an amazing season, finishing top 10 in North Jersey with two players, Dylan Connors and Ralph Turry, finishing in the top five for assists and saves. Our track team also had a great season. Colin Madera was named a state sectional champion in the male 400 hurdles. Tanner Christie received second in jav, fourth in shot put, and fifth in discus. Mason Ferbacher received third in jav. Jenna Hodgson received third in female 400 hurdles. Chloe Bridebag placed fifth in shot put, and Chloe Passick placed fifth for pole vaulting. Also, Michael McCloskey represented West Milford well on Special Olympics Team New Jersey by receiving the gold medal at the National Games. We are so proud of all our athletes this year. A couple weeks ago, our school held Highlander Day for the first time in three years, and it was a huge success. Everyone had so much fun, and all of our sports and clubs were successful in fundraising for the upcoming year. We also held the Senior Choice Awards, and we had so much talent, and it was a night full of fun for all of our seniors. The student council has selected a new executive council, so I'd like to say congratulations to Gabby Meza for being named next year's student council president and student representative. I know she'll do a great job. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak throughout this year. It's been a great experience and honor to represent the West Milford High School student body. I hope everyone has a great summer, and I wish everyone luck in the upcoming school year.
You did too well, Abby. I hope you have much success in the future. Where are you heading as far as that?
I'm going to Rutgers for, I don't have lunch in there.
You're going to be a vaccine person for us. So we wish you luck.
Thank you.
And have the best of luck and enjoy your summer.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. So now I need the resolution.
So I'd like to make a motion at 6:35 to approve the following resolution. The board immediately go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes on the purpose of conducting a Donaldson hearing. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? OK, so we will be returning in approximately 30 minutes.
I need a motion. I'd like to make a motion to extend executive session for another 30 minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will return in approximately 30 minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I think our, why don't we go to Superintendent's Report? Oh, yes.
Mr. Conklin? Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Greenough?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Dr. Anamon?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting for June. We have a couple items here today. We're going to save the best one for last, so we have to officially report our 2020-21 HIV grades. That's not a typo. That is the correct year. It's always one year behind that we get a mistake. So our HIV grade per school, and this is a maximum of 78 is the best score. I don't know how they didn't make the best score 100, but it's a maximum of 78. So the high school scored a 66. Applesworth 75 out of 78. McQuaiden 73. Maple Road 77. Marshall Hill 75. Paradise Mall 77. And up at Greenwood Lake was 75. We'll be back at this year, and this year is ending in a few days, and we'll start working on our HIV grades for this year, as just ended 2021-2020. Just a brief branding hometown pride update. I know we discussed this at the last board meeting. We are working towards that endeavor. We just placed some more placental floor tiles at Applesworth School, amongst other things. So it's going to be, as you can see just here, all the paint, the red paint on the walls. It's going to be a lot of signage, painting. It's going to be a little more comprehensive than we thought, so it is going to take some time. We have to buy just some money and do that piecemeal at a time. So we are working towards that end. It's just not going to be done for September, but a little by November it will be done. Well, next up, we have our 2022 retirees. Mr. Novak is going to help you with this one. We have a good amount of people retired this year, many for June 30th in two weeks, but others retired at different points during the school year. So we do have plaques for our honorees. Mr. Novak is going to help me here. I'll be over here with the plaques. Mr. Novak can read the names. We have many of our retirees here this evening, along with their families, and others who are uneducated. So we'll have to get them their plaques to our book there.
As Dr. Anamon is moving over to the plaques, I'm just going to read the names of our retirees who couldn't be here this tonight. I just want to say on behalf of all of your administrators, staff, colleagues, Board of Education, West Milford community, you know, thank you for all the time that everyone has put into, you know, everything you do for the kids of West Milford. At the end of the day, we're all here for kids, and I believe the people who are retiring tonight have given their lives to our students. So first and foremost, 26 years as a custodian of McQuaiden, Mr. Gary Ryerson. 10 years as a McQuaiden custodian, Mr. Anthony Perez. I'm reading the ones who are not here tonight. Got it? We're good? All right. Mr. Alan Efris, 27 years as an industrial arts teacher at McQuaiden. Mary Louz Alonso, CST Secretary, 22 years.
Shishwol.
No. Shishwol. Shishwol. I got it? We all know Iris. Iris is at the high school. Iris Shishwol, 24 years. Doing a great job. Sorry, I'll welcome her back. Should have practiced that one before we got off. And Mary G. Antonio, a bus driver, one of my drivers when I was a principal at UCL, 25 years transportation. And then we are on people with attendance. So the first person we are going to honor tonight is Mrs. Ruth Barock. We have a few brief comments from Mr. Kane. Ruth was always a beloved PE teacher in West Milford. She started her career at the high school and spent many years positively impacting the lives of Maple Road students, along with other elementary schools throughout the district. Congratulations. Thank you. Next is Joyce Trost. Joyce Trost? Joyce had a long and successful career as an instructional lady at Paradise Mall. She touched the lives of all the students and teachers with whom she worked, and she will sincerely be missed.
Love you, Joyce.
Next up is Leslie Fink. Before I read Mr. Citro's comments, I'd like to just add some of my own. The Fink family's been very important to me in my life and career. Got my start in education at the fast break camp, in which Joe had his name on it, but Leslie did all the work. Also, Leslie may or may not know this, but she is the first person that I told that my wife was pregnant with my first son. That was a big moment. My wife came to tell me at the fast break camp, and then the first person I saw was Leslie. Congratulations. And then from Mr. Citro, direct from Washington. She has been a complete team player, one of our teacher leaders, who the staff and administrators always held in high regard. McQuaiden will not be the same without her.
Thank you.
Leslie, it's a sad day that you're leaving us.
I had to. But thank you. We're going to miss you. We may be calling here. A sub in district?
We're working on it. Our next retiree is Mindy Turner. I have no notes written down, Mindy, because I can talk about you for a few hours. She just came from her retirement party with her school, so I know that Dr. Magalos probably just showered her with praise. Mindy, working with you was a tremendous time in my life. I started my administrative career with you as being one of the veterans in the building. You moved from classroom to classroom with grace and were successful in every role that you fulfilled. And you and I fought some battles together. We won't expand on those here, but, you know, when you go to war together, you're kind of understanding. So I'll save the rest for when I come to embarrass you on Tuesday at the school.
We've had a lot of fun together. You will be missed. You will be missed. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, Mrs. Van Zyle. Debbie Van Zyle, 29 years. I know Dr. Schwartz has some words planned for when they do their sendout here at Westbrook, so I went to the deeper cuts, and I got some comments from Dr. Joe Novak. And I asked for a brief, so bear with me. Debbie Van Zyle is the definition of efficient, effective, competent, intelligent, fair, and kind. She accommodated the requests of all teachers, parents, students, administrators, and staff with style and grace. Once she was asked to play a patriotic song on a loudspeaker for the school, and the tape system malfunctioned, Debbie improvised and sang it herself. She always found a way to get the job done. Thanks for all the great years. Congratulations on your retirement, and the best to you always. Congratulations. I'd also like to add the right spot of my year was my week filling in as principal, getting to work for Mrs. Van Zyle for a week. Fantastic. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Debbie, I love working here. It's a pleasure. Thank you. We've been through. Thank you. And we made it. Yes, we did. Thank you again. Thank you. Happy retirement. Thank you.
All right, and we're back.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
So one of our focal points this year, we discussed this point this time last year, was mental health, well-being, self-care, all those items. We knew that we were going to have children affected by the pandemic. We knew we were going to have staff members affected by the pandemic. So we did put a lot of help into, a lot of focus into that. This year, a lot of resources. We had an entire professional development day in, I believe, February that was just dedicated to mental health, well-being, self-care, and so on and so forth. We always try to lead by example. We looked at our students this year. They entered a contest for Passaic County, the Teen Summit, which was just last month. They had the award where various groups, various high schools submitted videos about this exact issue. So it seems like our message is getting through. So our students won, I believe, fourth place in the entire county. They have a very brief video. We're going to play it in a minute, and then we're going to move on. So it's a wonderful message. So I think, you know, it puts a little capstone or a little bow on this school year. We'll move just for a second, and then I'll tell the lights.
It's OK.
Not to be OK.
You're OK.
I play sports.
I do a lot of yoga.
I ride my bike.
I kick off my friends.
Play with my dogs.
Going to the gym.
Sleeping.
Reading books.
I listen to music.
Dance parties.
We all hope differently. For help, talk to family, friends, teachers, counselors, or anyone. You are not alone. It's OK not to be OK.
So if you go online and you go to YouTube, you can search for Passaic County Spring Teen Summit 2020, till you'll see all the winners from all the high schools. So congratulations to our students. Thank you to our guidance department for helping out, and thank you to our administration for supporting.
Listen to the tennis report? Thank you, Dr. Anamon. Mr. Novak?
All right, I just want to briefly report on the results of our most recent CUSAC analysis. As many of you know, as you all know, we get evaluated by the state every three years for the areas of instruction program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. And we received our final results, our final memo from the acting executive director, and I'd just like to read a small piece of it. I am pleased to inform you that your district has satisfied at least 80% of the weighted indicators in each of the five areas of the NJCUSAC review process and has been designated as high performing. The commissioner will recommend to the State Board of Education that your district be certified as providing a thorough and efficient system of education for a period of three years or until the next NJCUSAC review. Congratulations on this accomplishment. So along with being proud of our accomplishment, I just want to, you know, say thank you and give praise to all of the people who go into us reaching a high performing. None of this happens without, you know, the support of the staff, everyone doing what they're supposed to do, our board, the people who sign up for our committees and, you know, just do the things that they're supposed to do each and every day. So high performing designation is for all of us, not just the people in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Mrs. Francisco?
Yes, I apologize for not getting the minutes to you until this morning, but there's been a lot going on.
Well, it's a quick turnover.
Yeah, yeah. So, and we had that extra meeting in there on the line. So you have the minutes from May 9th and May 17th for your review consideration.
I need a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, May 9th, 2022, special meeting, public budget hearing, May 9th, 2022, executive session, May 17th, 2022, workshop regular meeting, May 17th, 2022, executive session. Second. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? President's report. I had a very busy week already. Last week, we had the scholarship awards at the high school for the seniors, and it was wonderful. I think everybody that was there thoroughly enjoyed it. It is, our community is so generous in providing scholarships to our students. I have to just say a big thank you out to all of the different groups that came, the PTAs, the businesses that are supporting the kids, because it was a wonderful night, and it was wonderful to, again, be back in that setting in the high school and seeing the kids get their awards and just meeting with families and friends. And I really think it was a wonderful night. Kudos to the guidance department for doing a great job. It was a great night. Today, I was at Applesworth School for the awards for the fourth and fifth graders, which is another fun day. It was great seeing all those smiling faces and just enjoying looking at all the projects and the things that they have in the school. The school was very well decorated. It was beautiful. And yesterday, I got to be at Marshall Hill, and that was a fun day, too. Dr. Anamon was with me. We had a good day. I believe Mr. Novak was there also. It was just, I can only encourage you, if you can go to one of these, it's really important because it's so, the kids are just wonderful. They're smiling, you know? And when we used to have it here, we didn't get that connection with them. So I think it's really wonderful that we're kind of giving them their day. So I want to thank both Alyssa and Patrick for letting me come to their schools, because I really had a good time, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I also attended McQuaiden's seventh-grade band concert, which was in the high school, which, again, is so wonderful to have in the high school there because the setting and just the acoustics in the building is wonderful. Another fun night, very well turned, a lot of turnout. I just think it's wonderful. So many people are coming out, and I know that everybody's looking to go out and do things again. So I just want to thank all of the teachers, the music teachers and the music department in McQuaiden for a great job. Now, public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Has anyone signed up for public comment? If not, is anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
Hello, my name's Tom Wilson. I have a child in the public school system at West Milford, and I'm here to address the health and reproductive planned lesson curriculum that has been handed down by the state. And as written and presented by the state, it makes me uncomfortable. And I kind of want to know how West Milford is going to proceed, you know, the names of the books, the curriculum, any of the online materials, who are the authors, you know, where's that coming from? If there are any advocacy groups or third-party groups or vendors that are involved in this curriculum, in designing this curriculum, I'd like to know what they are. I'd like to know if there's an official opt-out procedure. And if there is an opt-out procedure, what happens to the child? Are they singled out when they're moved away from something that I don't want taught? How is that going to be handled? I think, after reading a lot of the things that I saw on the state website, I think a lot of the things that they have and they've mentioned are things that should be left up to the parents. I think there are also implications, like religious implications, that are only meant for families and not for the public school to address. And I know that some New Jersey school districts are actually pushing the curriculum to the last week or to the last day of school so that they meet the requirements so they don't get any lack of funding, so that funding isn't removed, and they've listened to, I guess, the parents, you know, from those districts and have accommodated them in that way. I guess we would just like to have more input into what's going on, because it just seems that because, you know, because with COVID, I know it was supposed to come out sooner, and then because we were all trying to get past COVID, it just kind of snuck up on us, and now it's here. And I just want to know, you know, what our district is doing, how they're keeping the parents informed. Could there be a public meeting on the curriculum changes? I'd appreciate something like that. I think that's about all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know we don't typically respond to public comment, but I mean, you know. So I, I know we don't typically respond to public comment, but I feel like there's some answers to your, to your questions that we can provide now. The curriculum that's being adopted tonight, that is the addition of the core content, New Jersey Student Learning Standards update to the current health curriculum. Activities, lessons, third-party vendors, advocacy groups, none of that is in this curriculum. This is simply the addition of the new standards. We also have on the board agenda tonight approval of our health and PE teachers to work on the implementation of what those lessons are going to be. We are not, we are not involved with any third-party groups. We are not in part, in, involved with any advocacy groups. It is our intention, not intention, we will be having a parent meeting in the fall when we are ready to implement. No lessons that are changed, especially the ones that are in the sex ed units. None of those lessons will be implemented prior to the parent meeting or the availability of those lessons for our community to review. So everything will be clear. This is a typical process in West Milford. We always write curriculum in the summer. We are able to get ahead of it and get our curriculum done so that we can spend our time this summer focusing on, on those lessons. Dr. Anemo put a letter out in the middle of the year in regard to a opportunity for families who are, I guess, choosing not to have their children present during those lessons, that we will provide advanced notice. And units that, for lack of a better, just, you know, units that parents are choosing topped out of, the, the sex ed units, will have that opportunity with advanced notice. So everything will be, you know, transparent and clear. There's no, you know, hidden agenda. We are, you know, we, we build in the, I guess, in the tone for the community in which we, in which we live. So every curriculum we build, whether it's health, whether it's science, whether it's ELA, reflects the values and, and goals of the community in which we serve. So I think that, I think that answers this point that we have, and you will have plenty of advanced notice for when that parent meeting will be and when you can have opportunity to review those, review those units. I just would like to comment on the, you know, the, some of the districts that are doing a last day of school type of process. You know, we chose not to do that, because we believe every student has the right to enjoy their last day of school. It's always a fun finale celebration sort of day. We can accomplish the same goals, allowing for, you know, students to not be included in the process, similar to a process we already have in place with the growing and changing bodies unit that we offer in our elementary schools, fifth and sixth grade. So we have that process in place, and we will, we will follow along with that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello. My name is Henrietta Schaefer, twenty-two Broadway. So just to follow up on what Mr. Wilson said, I actually had a whole thing prepared that paralleled a lot of what he said, but now I don't need to say it. All I would ask for is just for continued transparency throughout this whole process. I know a lot of districts have their curriculum online, and I think that that would also be extremely helpful for a lot of parents. You know, transparency at the very beginning is great, but I think that a lot of us really do have concerns about the curriculum going forward, especially as our children progress through the grades. And I would also just like to add that the parents that have concerns about this are not what the media is telling you. These parents are not bigots, they're not homophobes, they're not transphobes. They're parents that really have true and sincere concerns about age-appropriate curriculum for their children, and thank you for respecting that, and thank you for respecting us. So please just continue transparency as much as you can do that. We sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Not anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Patricia Wenzel. I'm from thirty-one Bear Fort Road. What I want to talk to you about is not on your agenda, but if you were, if you have, I think you said if you still have the thirty minutes, maybe you would receive it, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I have a big audience. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Thank you very much. On Thursday, May fifth, this year, the United States celebrated the annual National Day of Prayer. The National Day of Prayer is a prayer for people of all faiths. The annual observance was established by federal law as of nineteen fifty-two, and here it is, this was established by law for the state of New Jersey in nineteen forty-four. We have long celebrated this day in West Milford, and not until this year has anyone tried to block prayer anywhere in the township, to my knowledge. I have personally been involved in praying for this township through community prayer efforts since nineteen eighty-six. However, sadly, this year, our superintendent of schools told us we had to leave the Board of Education property and were not permitted to pray on school grounds. He was concerned, he told us, people might see us praying and be offended. I found this behavior to be disrespectful to God, the rule of law, and us personally. I and the other two ladies who are with me tonight were with me that day. It was only the three of us. Please know that we contacted the Board of Education about three weeks before the Day of Prayer to check if there were any new guidelines in light of COVID. The person I spoke to told me she could call me back, and there, because it was no one present at the time to answer my question, I never got a return call, so I assumed all would be as in the past. Yet, we chose not to advertise the prayer at the Board of Ed Building at three thirty, except for a flyer that we attached to our cookie trays that we brought to township workers and staff at the board office, Macapin School, and the high school, just in case staff people would like to join us. It is still beyond my comprehension why the superintendent would be concerned for the feelings of other people who were not even present over allowing us to pray for our schools, especially at the times we are living in. Due to understandable limits of times, I have prepared a packet that I'm sure the administration secretary would be willing to copy to give you the evidence that you might choose to look at, propulations for this year that were issued by President Biden, Governor Murphy, and Mayor Dale, along with a copy of the law from the state of New Jersey with Governor Whitman's signature on it. I also have a copy with information of the history of the Day of Prayer and the history of prayer in this nation. We understand you may have to address this privately, but I look forward to hearing from you at some time, so that we can be assured that praying, praying for our schools will never be blocked again. We're happy to fill out a permit. We're happy to do whatever would make you comfortable, but we certainly want to continue to pray for our schools. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sherry Parlato. I am president of West Milford, and I also attend the Almond Ranch Church Ride over on Marshall Hill Road. And I just wanted to let all of you know that the schools, the children, all of you, the staff, are a very big part and very dear to us. And what I am in charge of is I have started a community prayer group that meets every once a month, about the second Friday of every month, and we need to pray for the community. And the Lord has placed on my heart for the next three months, which we met last Friday, and will continue to for July and August, to pray for our schools, pray for our children, pray for all of you and, and your families. We do pray for the safety of our children. We pray for, we pray against the bully, bullying that goes on and violence. We take care of that area, but we also pray for you as well, for wisdom, how to be able to strategize when you have problems that come your way, that you would be able to handle them and, and, you know, in a, in a good way. So I just wanted to let you know that we do need, in fact, we're going to be, I think I said, we're going to be meeting the next three months just to pray for you and pray for our schools. We pray in general, but if there's anything specific that you want prayer for, I'd encourage you to reach out. You can call the Almond Ranch, just for me. I would be more than happy to meet with you or take your prayer requests, so that we can pray specifically for you, for these children, for the school district and the entire staff. But you are very dear to us, and we do care about you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'll just quickly say, I'm Catherine Di Benedetto, AKA Molly's mom. Some of you know me, and some of you definitely know my, my daughter Molly Di Benedetto, who is a graduate of the class of twenty twenty. It's hard, emotional, but Molly's been at the high school for two years now, and I just want you to know that she continues to pray for every school by name each and every morning, and some of you by name each and every morning. The moment we hear the school bus at the point three's turn around where we live, we pray for all the schools with special attention to the class of twenty twenty-two, because they are living, I mean, and, you know, she's a COVID class. They're living in extraordinary times. And when you talk about, you know, doing little film clips for, for mental awareness and what these kids have been through, please let us pray for them. They, they need folks coming alongside of them that, that really know that, that they care for them. So I just wanted to add that and just let you know, it's been my distinct privilege as a parent to be part of this school system all of these years. We've had such incredible support, and it's a pleasure for us to be able to pray for you every day.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to close public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need, we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there any others to do the agenda?
No, we updated it this afternoon, and you should have a new copy of it on your.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, education. I'd like to move items one through thirteen for approval. Second. Discussion? No discussion under, under education?
Not one through thirteen, I guess.
Okay. Uh, one through thirteen, right?
Yes.
Vocal?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Fourteen will be after executive session? Personnel, student affairs. Mr. Graham?
I'd like to move items one through eighty-three under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Quabon? So I, I saw a number seventy that you have Heroes and Cool Kids come up. This agenda, and I just wanted to commend, I know we talked about guidance, but also the video that was put together that took forthplace. That was the Hero of Cool Kids?
Yes.
And Joe Jordan that put that together. So congratulations to that group. I do think they're making a difference. And Joe is, Joe Jordan is making a difference for sure with all the, the videos and drones and all those kinds of fun things that he's put together. It's on, right?
I know the program is very well.
It's on. It's on.
Any other discussion under personnel?
I have, I have something to say about items twenty-four to forty-three. I voted no on supervisors and principals increases because of the situation we're in. I, I respect each administrator and each member of the unaffiliated workforce, but I just, I, I have a problem. We're talking about restructuring. We're talking about not having enough money possibly to move into the following year, so I, I can't, I can't support this. I'm sorry.
Courtney?
I also would like to discuss twenty-four week.
Of course she does that. Can I ask that we table twenty-four? I'm sorry, Terry, did I introduce prior? Twenty-four?
Through forty-three.
No, through forty-two?
It's forty-three.
I only want to forty-two. I'm allowed to pick whatever I want. If you guys want it to be forty-three, you can change it. So I'm, I'm asking to table twenty-four through forty-two until after executive session.
Okay, so now that's a separate motion to table. You need a second for that.
I need a second for the table.
A second.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor of tabling twenty-four through?
Forty-two.
Aye.
Aye.
Does it have to be a roll call? It's got to be a roll call, right?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson? Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Now, any other discussion under the motions? For personnel. Eight?
Number fifty-two. Is it possible to tell me the position? I don't know these people. I'm just curious. Could you tell me the position? Yeah, thank you.
So, I mean, Becker is a social worker. Megan Donahue is a reading specialist. Maureen Kelly is one of our encore teachers. Kim Walker is a reading specialist, and Jamie Kepner is a reading specialist. I am, you know, possibly at the July meeting, I'm looking to get a classroom candidate teacher and a special education resource center teacher as well, to just.
Say the first one again, I'm sorry. Resource center specialist?
Resource center teacher and a general education teacher. Basically, the components of what would be on an INRS team. So I was, I wanted to get those names. It's just, you know, couldn't find the people to agree with it at that, at this point in time when the agenda had to be prepared.
Okay. So I have some comments. We did just, and we talked about the CUSAC scores. It's awesome. We're high performing. I'm really excited. But I did look into the eighty-seven percent in instruction and program, and there's some things that are looked at there, one of them being RTI services, really. And so I, not even that these questions have to be answered tonight, I just was thinking about it. If you don't see anyone there from the high school, I think rapport among services and tiered services need to really be from preschool to twelve period. And if... I hate the key world comment, but if this was the key world, I'd love to see some less people meeting on what, some of these other committees and some more people on this one that could help us be a higher performing district and really have more counseling, you know, what does everybody get? And in the end, in the fall, or maybe in the end of August, I'd love to see what committee number fifty-two has as tier one, tier two, tier three for each grade level. Thank you.
No, I can just comment.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. This is the beginning of what we see. You know, these were, these were some pre-pandemic goals. We talked a lot about getting back to our pre-pandemic goals. This is something that we've been looking to do. I apologize that this wasn't named elementary. This is an elementary.
Okay.
This is an elementary group. We have, so that's my fault. I didn't, you know, I missed that in appropriating for the agenda. This is an elementary group. We are, we are intending on having a INRS committee review at each level. There's a position that we're posting, hopefully based on some of the new title funds that we've received for a, you know, it's a title we've used in the past. It's an existing job description called Interventional Specialist. We are hoping to reinvent that position. We are hoping to reinvent that position to directly support exactly what you're talking about, Mrs. Romeo, in terms of INRS, where INRS meet RTI. You know, in West Milford, we have traditionally been an INRS district. RTI is some of the language that we typically use. So we're looking to make sure that we're all on the same page and kind of unify our process. And just to comment on CUSAC, we did receive full points for the indicator that is directly referencing interventions in our process.
Courtney?
I just have one clarification. Are we, reminds me, Mr. Novak, we are doing the summer literacy program for our encore students, correct?
And beyond.
And beyond. So this is in addition to supporting children.
This isn't working directly with students.
Right, no, I know. But this is in addition to getting things ready for September. We're still supporting children in the summer, but this is getting ready for September. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Sorry. Tell me this one more time. We did receive full points for?
Full points for the, I always call the INRS indicator.
Good.
We received full points.
So then at the next education meeting, can you just show us where we did miss the points? Yeah.
I, I, I'll show you.
Thank you.
It's all the standardized test score indicators. That's the only place we lost points.
Okay.
For these scores and to be perfectly honest, those scores were from, were they 2018, 2019?
Whether it had to stand by the assessment in 2020 or 2021.
Right.
They went back. They're still using the 2019 assessments to not give us.
Spring 2019, right.
Spring 2019.
Mr. Garino?
So I'm gonna ask this question because somebody asked me this question. I couldn't give my non-football answer to this question. So number seventy-four, where you have the summer football director and assistants. I know I was talking about, you know, how they do have a summer program and workouts and so forth. And then the question came up, well, don't other sports have some of those summer programs? And how are they, or do they have coaches? Are they compensated? So maybe you can help me explain that better because my friend didn't like my answer.
I don't know what the other sports are doing. I know we've done this for football for, I don't know how long.
When I was playing.
Well, that's a conditioning thing, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what the other sports have and don't have, so I don't want to compare that. But we've always had this summer football. I think it's in the contract.
That's unfair.
Well, they do condition, they do conditioning and they do, right, so.
So does field hockey.
But they do, they do captains practices, which is different.
The other thing is, if I may just comment, because I have a varsity cheerleader going into the high school, so I know a little about this.
Perfect.
But the first game is before school starts. So I think that that probably has something to do with it as well.
Well, no, I think they're on here.
They're always here.
To get paid, starting, I think, August because that's when practice starts.
All right.
Need this approved before practice, before that. Because they do conditioning, they do workouts, they use the weight room, so you have to have.
They usually start, I believe this summer football starts from one day.
I need to know if that's in their contract because when I look at seventy-two, it's very unfair and I know this is not negotiations, but from my point of view, look at step B for an assistant football coach, but then look at step C plus longevity for an assistant field hockey coach. The assistant football coach at step B is still making more money than someone who's been here longer teaching another sport.
Or.
Yeah, they are teaching. Either way, no matter what.
Levels. I mean, it's been that way, it's been that way forever.
We may add this onto their salary rate for summer.
It's not just West Milford?
No.
And these questions are coming from the community too. This is not like, people are asking us why football is getting.
And I did explain that, hey, this, like, it's not just West Milford, right? Every school district does this, that there's a period where there's a no contact period.
And it also doesn't mean it's right. If everybody does it, maybe we're the first ones that do it the right way. If it's not the right way, so I love to see what other people are doing when they're doing it really well, right? And match up. Is that the way it's supposed to be? Is it in their contract? Was this negotiated, the football?
Yes.
That's been there since the beginning of time and we've really held the line on increasing stipends. If, if the teachers are getting a, prior to 2010, if the teachers got a four percent increase in their, in their contract, I believe that the coaches also got a four percent increase on their stipends.
They have a guide. The, they have a guide. Oh, no, I know that part.
So.
Summer.
I'm trying to find the.
Yeah, I know. I know they have a guide. I know this.
Kate, I believe it is negotiated. That went in the contract a number of years ago.
Done.
I think it's because of when the sport falls too, why the summer is.
If you're starting at the end of June, you're talking about July, August, September, October, November. You're talking about a five month period.
Football's the first.
First. Well, I, but, you know. But the cheerleading is on here too. I mean, that's part of their stipend, I think, when they, they meet with them because I, it, this is, isn't the football stuff, it's like a separate thing like camp. The summer stuff has to do with camp and the sister training.
I don't think they go away. I think it's held here. It's not a wrong.
Contact in the sport has some, has some different.
Thing, the helmet. There's a lot more.
A team that doesn't participate in July workouts isn't ready to scrimmage a team in August who's been working out during July.
Maybe it is something that needs to go.
But I think a lot of that has to do with the equipment that they're using in this. You know, the safety factor using.
Maybe we, maybe it could be sent to, sent to everybody what part of the contract is in so that they can figure it out.
Who would be at the back, um, there now? Just give me a second.
Is there anything else while we're waiting on that?
Yes. They did have other things. Uh, hang on, there's so many pages. Number fifty-six. It says, um, hired at guys hourly rates. Is number fifty-six per diem? Uh, fifty-five and fifty-six are they per diem? Is that what various hourly rates meant?
So I can clarify that. First, for number fifty-five, the recommendation to approve child set eighteen members and therapists for the purpose of IEP case management and testing. In that contract, they do receive their hourly rate, whatever their salary is broken down, their hourly rate. The number fifty-six you asked about, right? So for that one, it's going to be like, the reason why it says that the various rates is again certified teachers and special class aides that are currently are employees, teachers and aides on the guide, they will get their hourly rate, but if you're a substitute, you will then get a substitute rate or the lowest aid rate. So they are at all varying rates depending on their, on what their salary is. They get paid for only the hours that they're working.
Well, number fifty-six, answer, I, correct me, it's the ASY program. So this is like an extension of their school year.
Correct. So number fifty-six is for, let's say you have a teacher that, let's use COVID, that ends up with COVID and I have to, and they have to stay quarantined for five days and we need to pull a sub. And maybe another teacher from that building is willing to come in two days. It will be, she'll fill in that as a sub, it'll be her hourly rate and we won't pay the person that's not there. But the problem is you can't predict that for the summer. So that's why it's written that way to allow the flexibility of me being able to fill in those spots. If that makes sense. In the past, and this is my, why it might be, feel a little different, Mrs. Romeo. In the past, we used to have subs, a list of subs that we would pull from. This year it's been a little more difficult to fill, to find subs. So we thought if we write it this way, then we can kind of call someone. And what I'm finding already is the staff are better at finding people to fill their vacations or that. So that's what kind of has already started to happen.
And the one above it, it has, that's because we have to do, we have IPs that have to be.
Correct. Those are usually preschool age students that still need to be tested, somebody that was consented for testing in June that gets tested over the summer to have an IEP for the fall. Yes, correct.
And not everybody on here is going to be getting hours. It's kind of just, that's the list you're pulling.
Correct. So these are the speech therapists, the OT, the PT that are willing to do an evaluation if we have one. Whether or not they'll be able to, it will depend on their availability. And then the case managers that you see, those are the only case managers that, that agree to summer work. What that looks like is different. I know one person, she's got a busy, she said, oh, we'll go around her, her kids. You know, somebody else might be willing to work and pick up a couple more days. And we talked in, in a committee in the spring about trying to get coverage during extended school year so that if parents call, we know we have kind of a schedule set of when people are working. Because in the past, they were working some of that from home. They will be in the, in the buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dan, number forty-seven, educational technology committee. Can you tell me what this committee is going to be working on here, sir?
We have a number of projects. You know, they're going to be a resource for vetting the process for our new website, looking at our old website, taking a piece of, you know, thinking what's on our existing website, what's worth saving, what's worth, you know, putting onto our new, our new platform. So website is a big part of what they're doing. We're bringing back digital citizenship night next year in the spring. This is the group that runs that event. So there's going to be some planning in terms of digital citizenship night. There's going to be some discussion again and positive planning. Hope at least a schedule to come out of the renewal of our after-hours program. After-hours Academy, we call it, aha, you know. It's teachers providing professional development for teachers. So we've had that process for many years. In the past, it was run by Laura Oaks, who is retired and moved on. But she, although she organized it, we had many staff members who participated in teaching these after-hours academies and not just members of the educational technology committee. The ETC just helped organize it and that's what we're going to bring back. So we would reach out to, if we wanted to talk about tier one RTI, we would find a professional in the district who's, you know, has taken courses, maybe came from another district and has that skill set. And maybe they can run it out to school club and teach you as part, you know, volunteer to, you know, to, to be part, not after-school club, after-school professional development session. So that's, that's the big three is the digital citizenship night, website review, after-hours academy. And there's also a piece, if there's time, everything I've just named. I mean, they're getting approved for ten hours, probably, that's probably sixteen hours worth of work I already said. So we're also looking at our designation as a common sense school district, which is granted through commonsense.org. And that is the, that is the organization who provides our digital citizenship curriculum. And we have been designated in the past. It's just, again, one of those things in the pandemic, we didn't renew it, kind of like our school character process. So we're looking to be once again named the common sense school district for our work in digital citizenship.
Awesome. Thank you. I have one added suggestion. It's my understanding that students in, I don't know what's happening at elementary school in this situation, but students grade like six through twelve, if they're disciplined, are like in school suspension. It's probably always been this way, that their work's in down and everywhere, but there's not a lot to do right now. And so I know other districts have looked into online character ed programs, like some, there's one called BASE. There's some other ones. And they go with the discipline and the, you know, if there's a fight, then the kids have to do a twenty-minute BASE program during their day and in school suspension. I don't know what it costs. I don't know what it, but it is another, like, something just to look into I wanted to mention.
So that goes along with, I don't know if I mentioned in the committee of the night, Dr. McPhee, we talked about the restorative justice process. That, I think, fits along with that.
Yes, it does.
Right, so that's something we've talked about. I don't know if it's something that we had tech committee would be working on. That is something that we are already planning to talk about at our administrative district. In the July, every, every summer, the administrative team gets together. We talk about the next year. You know, I mentioned that calendar is one of our big goals with that group. But we have a, you know, pretty elaborate process. So restorative justice is part of, part of that discussion. But I will bring that up.
Sorry, I think I only have two things left. Barbara, were you able to find it?
Yes, it's in the contract.
Thank you. And my last thing is that if I could do cartwheels, I would, but they'll save us. Number sixty-nine, we seem very happy to say that this district is going to have one designated anti-bullying specialist in each building. And I'd like to say thank you and, you know, I'm very pleased to be moving in all good directions every day, all day and not, it's nice to have an administration that's not going to stay status quo and continue to improve in areas where whatever and anything, you know, that we need improvement. So thank you. I'm done.
Sorry.
Is there, is there, is there anybody, is there anything else under, under personnel? Anybody have anything else? Okay, roll call Barbara and reiterate what's on there.
Okay, it's one to. One to.
Forty-one.
Twenty-three.
Right?
Yes.
One to twenty-three and forty-three to eighty-three.
So do we, we have a second on that, all right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien? abstain for number seventy, yes to the rest. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo? Abstain from forty-four and yes to everything else. Mrs. Dwyer?
No on number ten, yes to everything else.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on fifty, seventy-one and seventy-eight and yes to everything else. Operations and finance.
I'd like to move one through forty-nine.
Second. Discussion?
Can, I'd like to request to table number forty-nine until after executive session.
Okay, we need a second.
Is that?
Let me look at it. Let me look at it.
Although, Barbara, the tabling of forty-nine.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, so now it's one through forty-eight. Any discussion under the items on operations and finance? If not, vocal?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move number fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Vocal?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
I'd like to move fifty-one to fifty-four.
Second. Discussion? Vocal?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Our committees, parks and recreation, Mr. Conklin's not here. No one else has been at the parks. Safety, there have been no meetings. Superintendent roundtable, Mrs. Lockwood.
So these are from the May twenty-sixth meeting written by Kelly Stenziano. President, there was a question about the restructuring committees, what the. there was a question about the restructuring committees, what the timeline was. Dr. Anamo said that we're hoping to present an interim report to the Board of Ed in September and then final report with recommendations in November, December, 2022. Question about how the parties for the committee were chosen, and he stated that everyone that, you know, was chosen to participate, they put their name in, and anybody that wanted to come on late, all they had to do was reach out by email. There was a question about standardized testing, with the testing coordinator with the five oh fours. So some staff members lead test groups of folders with testing tickets that list accommodations for students. So there wasn't, some of the accommodations weren't in place for the state testing. And I know that it was clarified that it was an error, and that we, they could either, it's not written in here, but I guess I'll just state that what was said was that they could opt out at the test not validated or retake the test. There was a question about loss of funding, and a website was given so that people could go in and look it up. Chromebook collection follow-up. I know that all the principals have reached out to all the schools to say whether you're returning them or not, so I won't go into that one in great detail. PCTI numbers came up again, and then came out of registrations.
Thank you. Passaic County School Board. I have nothing at this time. New Jersey School Board? Nothing until probably September. We have our workshop in October. So there'll be more information coming. Legislative?
Okay. On June ninth, several committees convened and advanced various measures affecting New Jersey school districts. Mental Health Assistance Pilot Program, A six sixty, would establish a four-year pilot program, which up to fifteen school districts selected by the New Jersey Department of Education would establish a mental health assistance program in grades K through twelve. The district mental health assistance program would be designed to identify issues affecting student mental health and the possible impact of those issues on academic performance, and to provide interventions for and referral services in the confidential setting to help students who may be experiencing mental health difficulties. The bill is now headed to the Assembly Appropriations Committee for further consideration. Modifying definition of HIB, A eighteen forty-one, would amend the definition of harassment, intimidation, or bullying under the Anti-Bullying Bill Rights Act. Specifically, the bill would add action and behavior to the list of motivations of an incident that may be present in order for the incident to qualify as a HIB. Currently, that list of qualifying motivation reads, quote, "Any actual perceived characteristics, such as race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, or a mental, physical, or sensory disability, or by any other distinguishing characteristics." The New Jersey School Board Association expressed concerns regarding the opportunant potential burden of this change. To change the definition at this time could cause confusion and hinder districts' implementation of HIB policy. This bill is now headed to the Assembly Judiciary Committee for further consideration. School Threat Assessment Team, A four oh seven five slash A three twenty-three two two nine, would require each school district to develop a policy for establishing a threat assessment team at each school. The purpose of the team would help to ensure a safe and secure school environment by assisting staff and identifying students who pose a potential safety risk and preventing targeted violence in the district. It goes on to saying what they would like, who would be involved in this group. And the New Jersey School Board Association supports the bill, and it's now headed to the Assembly Board floor for further consideration. There's a whole, there's about, one, two, three, there's three bills going through the state about bus drivers and buses in general. Expanded testing for school bus drivers, A thirty-five sixty-four, would authorize school districts to administer certain motor vehicle services at school facilities to assist individuals who become school bus drivers. And it goes listing into what those services would be. New Jersey School Board Association does support the bill, and it's heading to the Assembly floor for further consideration. Emma's Law, S fifty-seven, would require any school bus that transports students with special needs to be equipped with interior cameras and global positioning systems. New Jersey School Board Association expressed concerns that the legislation would impose a financial burden on the school districts, and it does not include a state appropriation or funding mechanism to offset those potential significant costs. Right now, the bill is referred to the State Budget Appropriations Committee for consideration of its financial impact. Extending service life to a school bus, or to school buses, S twenty-five ninety-three, would extend for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year only the statutory permitted service of school buses by one year. This bill would allow the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission, in consultation with New Jersey Department of Education, to allow an additional year of service for any school using, any school bus used in the prior year that would otherwise be retired. And then finally, the non-CDL drivers for small school buses, S sixteen eighty-two, would permit the holder of a valid non-commercial driver license completion of certain required training to operate a type-S school bus to transport students to and from school unrelated activities. And New Jersey School Board Association supports this legislation, and the bill now heads to the Senate floor.
So it sounds like some of those bills, some of those bills are, they're going to help with CDLs at the... Might be a good thing, right?
Right. That's why, there was about twenty-five things going... There was about twenty-five bills on, on the, you know, on the floor. And I'm like, okay, I can't, but I even condensed three pages into what I read to you. So...
I'm sure everybody's having the same issues with buses.
Right.
If you're trying to get creative, you can get more people. And that concludes my report. Technology.
Well, so Dan talked about some of the stuff that was going on with technology. Other than that, we didn't have a meeting because there were some conflicts with regard to meeting last Friday. Most of us could be. So take over next month.
Is the webmaster job description going to go through there?
We have it on the agenda for our next tech committee meeting.
Are we looking to share services with the township for your webmaster?
So that's a...
When we get to the next one.
That's a good, that's perfect. That's a good segue. And we did talk with the township Board of Educate, the joint committee met first Friday of this past, of this month.
The second, I think it was.
And we did talk about shared services, I think, for the township. We didn't really feel like there was a need for them to do that, because they don't get to update things nearly as much as we do. So, did I get that right?
Yes. You got it right.
But we did, you know, I think it is something that maybe we talked to other, there's a possibility to talk to other school districts, too, where maybe there's...
I think that was something that we talked about in committee, and that Dr. Anamo is going to maybe reach out to some of these.
I'll reach out to also Northern Region Services Commission. They provide website services, a lot of services. So we have a meeting set up for next week.
The Township Board of Ed, Board meeting, Terry?
Yeah. Ray touched on the discussion that we had about sharing some, sharing a webmaster. There was a discussion about Kilgallen again, and there was also a discussion about our favorite topic, Hillcrest. You know, the discussions keep going on and on. They're concerned about the tax base and what's happening, and I guess we all are. So that's it. But the biggest thing was the website and the Kilgallen field. So that's all I know. Oh, in case anybody's interested, the old paintball place that was A and W, Wawa put in a permit for that property. So we might get a Wawa.
An ideal spot, actually, is. West Milford Alliance. Municipal Alliance?
The West Milford Municipal Alliance met on Monday, June thirteenth. The discussion included a national made-out, which will take place Tuesday, August second, sure to be a big success, as Scott's Run was a successful event for the Municipal Alliance. Heroes and Cool Kids was also another successful event that the Alliance helped to coordinate. The Alliance is looking into the TIPS, TIPS, or Training for Intervention Procedures, for local, for our local servers and sellers of alcohol. There is an upcoming wellness fair, with details still being worked out. The Alliance has been working with Mr. Novak in connecting our school district with the United for Pervention in Passaic County for programs, services, and materials for our district. Some of the students from the Heroes and Cool Kids, in addition to other West Milford students, participated in the 2022 Passaic County Spring Teen Summit Public Service Announcement about mental health, which we saw tonight. They placed fourth and received a $500 scholarship. From an email from Mr. Donald Dotteray, the students will be deciding as a group how to spend the money to promote social and emotional learning at the high school. We are leaning towards purchasing flexible seating for both the health room and driver education room at the high school, since every student will use one or both rooms throughout their high school careers. The Alliance is deciding on summer meetings, but will continuously receive reports over the summer from their very well communicating director.
We're happy to have the new director on board. Special education parent advisory. Her people say thank you. Right now. Right now.
So these are the meeting notes provided by Caitlin Babcock from the May twenty-fourth meeting. The meeting began with Dr. McQuade thanking Nina Pierson, also in attendance for dedication to our students. Dr. McQuade reviewed the important role of special services leadership and the impact on students with special needs, excuse me, in our school community. A review of goals and procedures of CPAC were given from the state website, and guidelines were discussed. Specifically, it was emphasized to direct parents to appropriate personnel when individual concerns arise. The specialized committees for restructuring were also reviewed with an emphasis on the committee regarding special services and next steps regarding this process. Concerns regarding staffing for ESY in the upcoming school year were addressed and discussed. Dr. McQuade stated that crisis support and PCBA staffing would be outsourced this summer through an agency. To continue the meeting, items from the CPAC were addressed to Dr. McQuade. These items included transitions to middle school, curriculum questions, clubs, banned opportunities, transportation, and changes in flyers coming home to parents. A question was raised about the ESSER grant and how this is being utilized in the summer. Special education students can be a part of those programs and support will be provided as needed. Dr. McQuade will continue to work on seeing if it is possible to hold an SEL-type camp or student-focused retreat in August. The timelines for IUP signatures were clarified based on current procedures. A question was raised about testing accommodations. Accommodations for students with color blindness were discussed. Further guidance is being looked into on the subject and is being addressed through SRT, the Superintendent Roundtable. Dates for the next year's CPAC meeting will be discussed during the summer and presented when available. Have a great summer.
Thank you. Old business. Anybody? No, I am fine. Just looking in the right direction, that's all. If there isn't anything for old business, I need a motion to say...
Saying none, I'd like to close old business.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. New business? Nothing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the business.
And I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operations of the West Milford School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes, and then, on permitting, other comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and are responsible before coming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and then employees of this board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
We may not know if you're closing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any of those? Okay. Now, we need a motion for executive session. I just want to say we're going to, we got some, but we also, I think, I think we're going to do at least an hour, maybe an hour and a half, just because, well, because we can come out sooner, but otherwise, then we have to extend, and there's a number of things that we have to go through. So stay two hours.
Okay. At nine oh eight, I move to go into executive purpose, for executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, HIBs, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable, and we will return for action in two hours.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. The meeting back to order. And I guess we're going to go to you, Terry. I think you have to do...
Got everybody. You?
Oh, yes. Roll call. Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
I think, I guess, you know what? We'll go Personnel, Student Affairs. Mr. Guarino? You want to do Education? Sure, do Education.
Okay. I'd like to move the following recommendations by the superintendent to accept as unsubstantiated the following HIBs. Two thousand twenty-two E six is unsubstantiated, and two thousand twenty-two H eleven is unsubstantiated. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move items twenty-four through forty-two under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? If not, roll call.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Keep them active.
Mrs. Stevenson?
I'm gonna be specific in my, my vote by number. I'm gonna go by number. 24 is a yes. 25 is a no. 26 is a no. 27 is a no. 28 is a yes. 29 is a yes. 30 is a no. 31 is a yes. 32 is a no. 33 is a yes. 34 is a yes. 35 is a no. 36 is a no. 37 is a yes. 38 is a yes. 39 is a no. I think I did that wrong. 38 is a no, 39 is a yes. 40 is a yes. 41 is a yes. 42 is a yes. May I discuss my reasoning? We're not allowed to do it.
Go ahead.
I feel very strongly that the people who are non-tenure deserve to work next year. I feel strongly that when we have a reconstructing, constructing happening, the possibility of a closing of a school, I cannot give raises out. And I, I'm sorry, I just can't, for my community, for the children that are here, I can't say that we can close a school and give raises. And that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Okay, uh, yes, on, uh, everything except 35 and 36, I abstain on this.
Okay, Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes on everything?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
That, Terri? There, 49.
I want to, uh, move number 49, Operation of the Bone.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
10:30 PM, I need to make a motion to the chairman.
Start it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.